The 2023 School Board Candidates Forum for Fairport, the Village of Fairport Harbor, sponsored by Fairport Harbor Public Library. I did this way better at the test. Anyway, just a reminder bathrooms are on the main floor of the library, which is number three on the elevator. And there will be no questions from the floor this evening. Candidates, you will get the yellow flag at 30 seconds and the red flag at one minute. The questions, your speaking order has been chosen at random. Gabby pulled names out of a hat earlier, actually out of an envelope earlier today.
And we watched her very carefully.
Yes, and we took careful notes.
Who was watching you?
Gabby was, that's why she's here. And that's all I got. Now, Mrs. Lawson, President of the Board of Trustees of Fairport Harbor Public Library, will welcome everybody.
Thanks, everybody. As she said, I'm Cam Lawson, the current president of the Board of Trustees here at the library, and we are just happy to host this event so you could get to know these people. Because this is Fairport, we have to understand one thing. These people are not just school board candidates. They're not just a name on a ballot. They're not just a sign in somebody's yard where you drive by and say, oh, I think I recognize that name. These people are our neighbors, they're our friends, we see them at the events, we see them at festivals, we probably talk to them every day, and they're probably our relatives. We know their families, and we even know where they live. So it gets a little personal when there's an election like this here in Fairport. And what I do want to say is, keep in mind, each of these five people here, well, I should say, not one of these people here is in this race for political gain. They're here because they care about the future of the school and the children in it. So listen carefully to what they have to say and make your decision from there. So now I'd like to introduce each one of them. We have Justin Levine, Sherry Morrischak, Amy Neff, Quentin Pietrowski, and Doug Schaefer. And our moderator tonight is Nancy Currie. Thank you.
Are you ready to get started? Okay. We're going to start the evening with an opening statement from each of you. Opening statements are three minutes long, and as Mrs. Lawson indicated, we pulled names earlier, so we'll work from that order. So the first one will be from Ms. Neff.
Yay. Can I take the microphone, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, hi. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Amy Neff. I've been a resident here in Fairport for 11 years, and I have five children here, and they have been attending school in Fairport for the last 10 years. I've grown to really, really love this village and our schools, and I have been interested in running for school board for several years now, and now, is it not working?
Take this one. Thank you.
Is that better?
Should be.
Okay. Okay. So I have been interested in running for the school board for quite some time, but I wanted to get to a good place in my life where I felt like my children were old enough, I could really devote the time and make the effort to do that. So over the last few years, I've been very actively involved in the school, doing a lot of volunteer events and PTO functions. I started becoming the Scholastic Book Fair Chairperson five years ago in 2018 at McKinley, and we will soon be expanding to Harding in December, so that's fun and exciting. So I've spent a great deal of time in the schools with the book fairs, formed many relationships with the students, the teachers, the staff. I also volunteered as a lunch and recess monitor in 2021, when we were, more kids were coming back to school from remote learning, and we were dealing with staffing shortages. Also, over the years, some of the other things that I have been a part of, the Parent Advisory Committee in 2019, the reopening committee in 2020 and 2021, the NNPAS Cohort Action Team in 2021, and I participated in the vision meeting of May, in May of 2022. Also, in 2018, I founded Feeding Fairport's Hungry. It was just a need that we felt would fit the community for the students and the kids here, and it's grown substantially over the years, and I've gotten to know so many people in the community, meet so many people and so many kids, and also kind of see like the greatest needs that do exist in our community, and what we can do and work together to address those needs. So that's been really, that's kind of been my passion project, I love doing that. We've done lots of Thanksgiving meal drives, Easter drives, and clothing drives, oh, and school supply drives. So next year, I do, I have five kids, I said, my oldest will be high school, middle school, elementary, and preschool, so I'll have kids in every level of the district. I'm running out of time. Okay, my greatest priorities, wide open communication, accountability, transparency, and working hard to ensure that the children's best interests are always at the forefront, and I want parents to feel trust in our school board and to feel heard, respected, and understood. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
Very good. Great all points.
Okay. Next will be Ms. Marushak, with three minutes.
Well, thank you for having us here, Nancy for being moderator, and Kathy and Kat and Pam, thank you. My name is Sherry Marushak. I am running for reelection of the school board, according to my second term, and we've accomplished a lot in the last four years with the new school coming and new superintendent, and I'm very proud of it. My, I think a lot of the kids, I do a lot at St. Anthony's, I teach PSR. I do--
Justin.
Okay, now, hold on. I'm done.
Well, can be an excuse or a mistake.
But, okay, so--
PSR, St. Anthony's.
St. Anthony's, I do kids choir, so I work with kids a lot, I also work at the Willoughby YMCA with, in the mornings with littles, anywhere from six months to five years old. So I do love the kids, I love the kids here in Fairport, I grew up here. My sisters and brothers and I graduated from here, my kids graduated from here, nieces and nephews, so a long line of family members that have, so I have gone here, so I love this town, and I love being on the board. I didn't bring everything down, so, but this is my second term, and I think we've accomplished a lot with everything that we've done with the school so far, so.
Thank you. Next will be Mr. Levine, with three minutes, please.
Hello. My name is Justin Levine. I'm a resident here of Fairport Harbor of the last five years or so. We moved from Mentor, so that's where I kind of grew up, but married, have two kids, four of our kids are now at McKinley Elementary, so I have a kindergartner and a second grader. And so basically, I've done quite a bit since we first arrived. You know, we started place Fairports, so no, I unfortunately did not bring any donuts for anyone, but, you know, right now, we're doing the golf cart side of the business, and so we're doing that, plus we have the concert series, the Fairport Harbor Arts and Cultural Alliance, luckily just donated a mascot costume, which hopefully we'll get to see on Friday for homecoming. And basically, my main work that nobody usually knows about, because I'm very involved in those two areas, has been in the education industry. So for the past 12 years, I've been in higher education, worked at Baldwin Wallace University, Ohio Westin University, Lake Erie College down the street, and most recently, now at Fire and True Red, which is a software company that works directly with high schools and colleges to help enroll those students that they're looking for at post-secondary institutions. And so a lot of my work has to do with dealing with those high schools and colleges, doing a lot of reporting and data diving to determine those different areas of, you know, things that they need to improve on, things that they should be looking for out of students that are graduating from high schools. And so that's kind of one of the main areas that I find myself more or less an expert within, of just really dealing with students and trying to make sure that they're finding their passion down there at the high school level specifically. Basically, in terms of why I'm running for the school board, I just want to ensure that my kids and all the students that are going through our school district are achieving, they're getting the proper education. You know, I've obviously seen since moving here, quite a difference in terms of the report card that's come out in years past, and so I just want to make sure that we continue to achieve and continue to push our students to be the best that they can, and find the passion that they really want to have while in school. You know, I think one of the biggest things for me, for one, is safety. When I first got appointed to the board, so it's a little bit different for me, where I was appointed in this past February, I basically met with the police chief to talk a little bit about the next steps to try to get that SRO into our schools, and so that was a big piece. But, you know, being part of the school build and getting the superintendent, I feel like I've been a very groundbreaking time within our schools, and so it's been fun for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Pietrowski.
Hi, I'm Quentin Pietrowski. A lot of you may know me. I've been in town almost all my life, I've taken a couple breaks. I was born into the service, and then I took a break and I served in the service. Parents tried to get out, the old story is, they tried to get out of Fairport, never having to come right back in. I also have done quite a bit in town, I've owned a few businesses, currently own a business, I Larry's Pizza, DeliverMeFood.com, all based here in Fairport. Raised my kids here, like a few of them have, I'm for the kids, I want to be here for the kids, I want to make change, I want to make way. My kids are getting older, so I have a little bit of extra time on my hands, whereas when they were younger, it's like constant running around the circle chasing each other. Forgive me if I stutter a little bit, had some things go on in Middlefield here a couple months, about a month ago, so I'm trying to get this speech thing back together. I'm just a simple man, I just want to get to work. I don't, I don't like elegant word, million dollar words, and trying to finesse people, I just want to get to work and show you what I can do. So sometimes I might fail, I'm gonna have to pick myself up, just like you pick up your kids and support your kids, and what we all want to do for this school. I'm also all about education, and I just want to work, just want to work for these kids, want to put things there for them. When my kids are gone, I'm gonna have a time period to wait for my grandkids to come, and they want to come back here, so I want to bring them back here, love this town. Big part about, you know, me running for school board is, I'm 100% campaigning for the kids. Every decision we make as a school board member directly impacts these kids. So if we're not fighting for these kids and making things happen, like their test scores, safety in school, which I've all been a part of, I like to be behind the scenes, so me standing out in front of you talking is, and put myself out there is a big thing. And we need the community's involvement, we need their volunteering, we need their continued support, they need transparency, they want to know where their money's going, they want to know why things aren't happening, if test scores are down, what's happening with the building. That's where school board comes in as the liaison and ambassador. So while I'm beating feet, making sure everything happens for the kids, like I do for my son for football and cheerleading, I also want to do it for the residents, so it's an open door policy, we should be able to walk up into a board meeting and talk, and ask board members questions. I'm running for school board for the future, children's education, our children's and teachers, staff, the school board deserve the respect and support. It's time to get to work.
Thank you. And Mr. Schaefer.
Okay, thank you, everybody, and thanks for this opportunity to come talk here. My name's Doug Schaefer, and I'm cheating a little bit, I'm putting a clock on there. But I grew up in Concord, I grew up in Northeast Ohio, I didn't know a lot about Fairport growing up, and graduated from Riverside, and went to Grove City College in Pennsylvania, and shortly after that, I got into environmental health and safety work, that's what I've done, to put food on the table, that's my job I have to do, I try to keep people awake while I talk to them about asbestos and lead-based pain all day, so no OSHA recordables, so we're all right there. But other things I've been involved in since, since getting out of school, is I started off with a group called Children Camping Services in Western PA, and we were able to put on a one-week camp for disadvantaged kids, and I was there with that group for about eight years, and towards the end of that, I saw this really pretty blond counselor that was working there, and started, and I was head counselor that year, and she was a rookie counselor, and we had to talk to each other and make sure rookie counselors come back, and we ended up getting married. So we started off life doing that, and from that, I got two kids out of the deal, so we started off with a tribe of four, and moved into, back to my hometown, which is here, and we became active in Trinity Church in Mentor, were there for about 20 years, and also I did a lot of coaching of youth sports teams. We had a lot of kids that played a lot of sports, and so I was usually one of the coaches for that. With the church, we did, taught all different grades of kids as far as youth group, children's church, things like that, was on our elder and geeking board, and I did that. We did foster parenting from about 98 to 2003, and from that, we got our third child and our youngest daughter. And on the same day she came into our home, we found out we were pregnant for fourth. So that was a memorable day, and so with four kids, we kind of phased out of the foster parenting a little bit. But as our youngest child, who graduated from here in 2019, we homeschooled our two youngest, because our youngest one had dyslexia and was struggling with that type of a thing. And so that's how we got introduced to Fairport, we opened and rolled them here. Fell in love with community, when we got involved in the community, since then, we've joined Family and Faith Christian Church, we're active over there. We've been involved in the, with the kids, with the football and that, we've been involved in the flag football league over the last five years, getting all those kids going together, and so this opportunity gave up, and that's how I started with my term as a school board member.
Well, that was great, you all stuck to your time limits very well. Okay, so our first question of the evening is, as our student population has become more diverse, what is your plan for, excuse me, recruiting and retaining a diverse faculty and staff? What is your plan to encourage professional growth and diversity awareness among the faculty and staff that supports the changing demographics of the student body? In one minute, please. Okay, we'll start with Mr. Levine, please.
So although it's not specifically our job as board members to hire teachers, I think it's very important to have board policies that welcome all students, staff, and administrators. You know, currently, we do have non-discrimination policies in place that, you know, help to do a lot of that for us, but at the same time, we have to kind of think about our faculty and staff that we have currently, and how many new things are going on with new curriculums and everything else that's happening. You know, the shortages of teachers and subs and aides really make it difficult for them, and I think it makes it even more difficult then to ask them to go through more trainings and such to do so. You know, I went through plenty of times of safe space training and other trainings to help with diversity specifically, and so it'd be great to do that here in the schools too, if it's not already happening, but I do find it to be a very difficult landscape to take on currently with where our teachers are at.
I blocked answers and talking about myself, I'm sorry.
Okay, go right ahead, Ms. Marushak.
The Fairport Harbor Board of Education supports the principle of equal opportunity for all individuals, regardless of their background or identity. We strive to hire the very best employees. If reelected, I will advocate for data-driven approaches to assess the effectiveness of diversity initiatives and ensure that resources are distributed efficiently. As a resident of Fairport Harbor, I value community engagement and partnerships with local organizations and communities to address diversity-related issues and provide support to students from diverse backgrounds. I will continue to look for ways we can support all students.
Thank you. Mr. Pietrowski.
I think it rose in news articles, so I better talk quick, this minute's gonna go quick. Teachers need to be treated with respect for all, for all the years that they worked to teach our children that we have in our school. We need the right tools and facility to do this, promoting teachers within and the room for advancement. We have lost many great teachers over the years. Teachers and staff need to work as a unit, simply their workload and their ability to work one-on-one with our children. Taking with, talking with the principal, superintendent, and board for new avenues of approach programming and programs. Diversity is large in our school, where it hasn't been like that before. We should welcome that, we should use that, it helps our children learn from that, that there's different cultures out there, and there's different ways of doing things. We need to support each other. Tools and programming and funding are out there, we need to stop spinning our wheels up with one thing and move on to the next.
Thank you. Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you. Each student has great value and is one of a kind. We do flag football, we talk to the kids about this, is that their DNA will never be repeated through the rest of human history. That makes them extremely valuable, that makes every person extremely valuable. It's really important that the kids understand that they have that value as an individual. And so that's just a value that we have to have, and I believe we do in a district, we value the kids that are there. But that being said, the primary responsibility that we have is to provide our kids with the best education that we can, all right? And so we need to respect differences, but not necessarily focus on them. We need to, you know, bring the kids together under good education, we need to look at goals, and sometimes we focus on differences, it can divide us, but we can focus on the things that bring us together. That'll respect the differences, but also make us stronger and make us more successful as a district.
And Mrs. Neff, please, and Ms. Neff.
Thank you. To start, I think that we need to establish what our core values are in our district, and we should be interviewing our long-term teachers, figure out what made them stay here, what was the appeal for them to stay here. We need to utilize staff feedback and build on that, and focus on community feedback as well. And ultimately, we want this to be a place where somebody with the same core values as our district wants to come and work, and wants to stay for a long time. We need to foster a supportive environment here for everyone, and we need to encourage individuality and creativity, and be opening to listening to our employees and investing in our employees. And if we do that, the right staff will be drawn here and want to stay here.
For question number two, we'll start with Ms. Marushak, and the question is, how do you view the current culture of the district? How do you plan to improve or maintain a positive culture for both staff and students?
Okay, I'm confident right now in our school district's culture. Maintaining a positive culture for students and staff requires ongoing efforts, commitment, and a willingness to listen and learn. By prioritizing these principles and strategies, educational institutions can create an environment where everyone can thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. I believe our district has strong school leaders, including administrators and teachers, who exemplify the desired culture through their behavior, their attitudes, and their interactions. I would like to continue to improve upon our vision and values as a district that is committed to fostering a positive culture.
Okay, Mr. Pietrowski.
We absolutely have a diverse culture in Fairport Harbor. We have a diverse group of kids, this is a great, this is great for social experience to see different cultures, ideas, and language. Kids are fiercely loyal to each other. Sometimes they have differences, they get over it, they get back together, it's a process of growing up. It's gonna continue to grow as the brand-new school develops, we bring in fellow seats. We're gonna, we're gonna experience this. These situations with kids protect, these kids protect one another, they protect the kids, I mean, they protect the school, they protect the teachers alike. I think we're on the right path, there's room for growth. Fairport is, in general, has been a rich history of diversity. Culture changes here and only opens the doors to new experiences.
Thank you. Ms. Neff.
When I think of the culture here in Fairport, I think of the close-knit family-like environment that we have here, and there's a lot of pride and really deep history, and I think we should build up that foundation of that to awaken the pride of future generations to represent our school. We want them to be proud to wear that Fairport uniform and to be proud that they are a student here, and we need to aim for achievement and always look for ways to find, ways to better the district and community and set achievable goals. To maintain a positive culture, we need to maintain a positive and supportive environment for students and staff, and we need to make sure that our teachers are fulfilled, and if we do that, it will have a positive trickle-down effect from the top to the bottom.
Oh, you've already answered this question, haven't you? I'm sorry. Mr. Levine.
So in terms of culture, I think that our students definitely have a lot of pride, but at the same time, I think they're tired. The students, the staff, you know, they're going through a lot, you know, from COVID, now going forward, new curriculums coming in, a lot of time of not having the same teacher in the classroom every single day. It creates the tiredness amongst the students, the staff, everyone that puts on everything that we need within the district. And so I definitely think having more help within the schools would benefit everyone, it could definitely help to increase that morale that we need within the district, and really to help to try to change the focus, to trying to find the students' passion and where they need to be. So I think those are the main goals that I would want to try to curate through being on the board, of just really focusing on the students and the staff and making sure that everyone is having a great experience.
Okay. Did you answer all of them?
Not yet.
I'm sorry, I'm not excited. Mr. Schaefer, would you please--
Thank you. You know, I think about Fairport culture, we're not a perfect place, but there's a lot of good here. And on the positive side, the really cool thing about this place is that people can be known. My youngest son graduated from here, but when we walk through the schools, you know, even elementary school teachers will ask, how's your son doing? Years after he graduates, they know him, they ask about what he's doing, they know what his past has been, they know what he's been up to, and they just ask what's next, and you get that throughout the community. And you get that throughout the community. And so having that, and you've heard it up here, it's just special here. But we also have some negative things. And one of the negative things I think that we have that we can just pass away is the attitude that, you know, it's a Fairport thing or things happen in Fairport that are bad. Sometimes you see that negative connotation here where failure occurs. And failure can be part of the journey, but it's not the destination. With the changes we've had in our school, there's no reason for us not to thrive. We have the financial ability and all those things, and so we need to change that mentality.
Thank you. Okay. Don't put that microphone on. Mr. Schaefer, you're going to start with question three. A school board sets educational goals and establishes policy for the school system based on state laws and community values. What are our community values?
With a diverse community, there are many values, good and some not so good. Again, like I said before, the value of the fact that an individual is known and can make a difference in this community is something that is really unique about this community. When we do the flag football league, we kind of teach that. We have adult volunteers, but the really special thing that we have in that league is we have our primary coaches, our high school football players, and our high school cheerleaders. And they actually teach the elementary school kids. You have a situation there where you have a bunch of kids that are connecting with the younger kids, but the younger kids are connecting with the older kids. They know the kids they see on Friday nights. And so those types of committed relationships is one of the things I really value about this community and the things you just can't fabricate and that we should capitalize on moving forward.
Okay. Mr. Levine, please.
So moving from Mentor to Fairport, I have seen a lot of changes and a lot of differences between the communities. You know, when I went through Mentor Schools, I was a number. I was not really seen as anyone or anything. And when we moved here, we quickly learned that everybody's in your business. You know, which is a good thing, though, in many ways, because, you know, there's plenty of times where we've had to help our neighbors or had to learn to respect each other just because of the amount of distance between houses or, you know, creating some sort of accountability for your personal behavior, which is things that really, again, you're a number when you're a mentor, and it's very different. But, you know, I think our schools do a great job already of instilling that early on within the education, using the PBIS program for one, which is the Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. I think we really do strive to create good students that are well-rounded, that have a lot of respect when you first come out of the schools. So, thank you.
Mr. Pietrowski, please.
I think our school states it pretty well, FHS. We're a melting pot here, Finns, Hungarians, and Slovenians throughout the history. If you didn't know that, then you might want to move out of Fairport. The community is ever-changing with that history. Vacation destination for a lot of people and cultural arts and businesses that are coming to the downtown, making businesses and the culture, using them as tools to teach our young children what's going on. Our values are traditionally the same: accountability for personnel behavior, accountable to the residents, accountable to the financial health of the school, respect integrity and morals to the community, pursuit of excellence that you have dignity. Everyone is different and has opinions. Learn and work together.
So I've lived in a lot of places over the years, from Indiana to Hawaii and back again a few times, and I've never lived anywhere like Fairport. It's a very unique community. The whole community jumps in and helps out all the time, and they go above and beyond. I do think that is a staple here, and the people here take great pride in that, and they all look out for each other, and they really do take care of each other. We respect our past here and our history, but we move forward as a community supporting each other. And it's the most giving community that I've ever seen, and I think that's one of the biggest values that we have.
Fairport Harbor is a small town that offers a sense of community and neighborliness. We have an active community and involvement and participation in local events, organizations, and initiatives that are highly regarded. We have a rich history, and preserving and celebrating heritage is a strong core value. Having Lake Erie here, it's proxim, the Fairport Harbor School is an educational district by the shore. The community shows strong support for our local schools, businesses, and law and fire enforcement.
Mrs. Neff, you're going to be first on the next question. Board members make decisions on a wide range of issues, from hiring and evaluating a superintendent and treasurer, setting policy, planning services, goal-setting, long-range planning, adopting curriculum, establishing budgets, engaging parents, being fiscal stewards, on and on and on. But a board member has to be a skilled decision-maker. At the same time, they have to work with decisions that are made only by the board as a whole at a public meeting. In your opinion, what are the primary needs of the district and which ones require immediate attention? Please explain.
Okay, so my biggest needs that I see: bullying, safety, and our report card. Bullying, I really think we need to be implementing anti-bullying agendas by holding assemblies starting at the elementary level, having bullying awareness and education for parents and students, cyberbullying awareness specifically definitely needs to be addressed. And we need to put an emphasis on accountability and upholding the board policies when it does come to bullying. Safety, it's every parent's biggest concern in this day and age, and we have made great strides with the safety committee and the SRO. We need to focus on passive safety approaches, open-door policies, education awareness for parents and students, especially regarding social media, report card. We've improved, but we have a long way to go, and I think that needs to be a big emphasis.
Thank you. Mr. Levine.
So I think we currently have a great board that works well together to make tough decisions yet know our roles. You know, I think we're fully behind our superintendent and treasurer and ask their opinions constantly when it comes to making those tough decisions. And we really hire those two administrators to tell us what the primary needs are based on all the conversations that they have internally, you know, with the principals, with the students, with the staff, et cetera. But from the outside, if I had to form an opinion of our needs, I think teacher burnout is a big one, especially with the shrinking size of the number of teachers that we have to choose from. And I think more staffing is necessary. We have some very large classrooms that just have one teacher to work with all levels of talents in the classroom. And having 30 kids to one teacher can really make it difficult, if not impossible, to continue to educate rather than just discipline and manage your classroom. So, thank you.
And Ms. Marushak, please.
Number four. Right, in my opinion, my goal for the district is to continue to focus on student achievement. The school board's primary role is to work within our community to approve student achievement goals, understanding the school board's role in creating conditions necessary for students to be successful, making sure that district goals align with effective instruction and curriculum alignment while encouraging a positive relationship between our parties. If reelected, I will continue to work on a clear vision for the district and promote and contribute to ensure that every student's learning is individualized and caters to our students' diverse learning styles and abilities. The involvement of parents in the community is crucial to a student's success. I will continue to foster partnerships between our schools and the community, including regular meetings and open communication to ensure that all stakeholders are involved in shaping the future of our district.
Mr. Schaefer, please.
When we look at the needs of our schools, three of them come to mind off the top of my head. First one is that we have a great opportunity in building this new school building, but we also have to make some good critical decisions as we transition from these two old ones to a new one. Right now, we have a good team, we have people being mindful of it, but we need to stay on point, we need to stay on task. We got, it's a community building, it really is. And so not only do we want to focus on the education, we got decisions on the football field to make and those types of things. Second of all, the school report card, we had a nice discussion last night about literacy, and K through 12, two is a really important time to get kids reading properly. And then thirdly, I would say, is to continue the strong relationship we have between the village and the school district. The SRO is an example of that, the safety committee is an example of that, there's a program called Handle with Care out there, and that's a good way for the village to meet together.
Our main responsibility, and I can't stress enough, is to our kids. And with that said, you know, I feel we have a large, large task ahead of us, providing excellence in education. If our state school testing and staffing, our state schools' testing and staffing is hurting, do like Ohio State coaches, tell the kids going to camp, fix it, simple, no matter how complex it is. Adequate staff retention, internal advancement for teachers, adequate help with a struggling student, so that teachers can go one-on-one with these students. Get off the computer, start teaching. Don't let them keep repeating the subject over and over and over again. They're just writing answers down. Transparency to the community. We're asking for help. We've got all the help we need in the community. The volunteers will come. If we're more transparent about what's going on with our students, what's going on with our school, our fiscal health, get back to the basics, reading, writing, and written content.
Hold on to that microphone, please. Okay. Our next question. Another important part of the board's work is public relations. School board members help build public support and understanding and lead the public in demanding quality education. The board serves as a link between the schools and the public. In what ways can we market the district to increase appeal to new families?
We can market to new families, we attract families with retention of teachers, support where they're needed for them to teach and not inundate them with overloads of responsibility. Continue the programs such as CCP and Auburn Career Center for our students. Excellence in education overall, state test scores will rise. Continue to add programs, excellent in the arts, sports programs, keep our kids busy. With more students, we fill the seats, fund new schools, and we grow. Start new programs in education and extracurricular activity. Programs don't fail. Students don't fail. If teachers are engaged and want to teach, our students will be engaged and love to come to school.
I do think we have a lot of really great things going for us here that are appealing to new families. We have the close-knit community of the schools, that's a great appeal. Our IV curriculum at McKinley is unique to the whole area and sets us apart from other local schools. We don't have a pay-to-play system for sports, so that gives all kids access to be able to participate, but we really need to work on that report card, and I really think we can do it. And that's just going to elevate our schools even farther up, and we would really stand out with our location, the community, the whole entire atmosphere here. And if we have that going for us, I think we will have a huge appeal for more families to come here.
Mr. Levine.
So I think our new building will, for one, be probably the largest and best appeal for any new family coming to the community. Obviously, we need to make sure that they have housing in the community so that we can continue to bring new people in and still continue to have open enrollment as well. But in the past, IV curriculum and the small classes have really helped to attract students, and I do think that the state report card, though, is one of those most important keys to continue to drive students to engage and want to be here, or families to want to be here. Athletics is a big piece of that as well, having theater and band and traditions like the homecoming bonfire, and all of that really helps to entice more families to want to be a part of this community. And so I think those are the main areas that we need to improve on, which is the report card and continue, like, traditions and athletics and theater and band and all the extracurriculars. Thank you.
Ms. Marushak, please.
Okay, building our new school will offer a modern, well-designed facility that will enhance the learning environment. We're talking about state-of-the-art classrooms, technology, and amenities that will be attractive to both students and parents. Along with the new facility, our school will continue to offer innovative educational programs that set us apart from the rest. We will have improved safety measures in our new building to help protect our students. We already have an online presence that we will continue to grow and foster a user-friendly and informative district website that provides details about curriculum, extracurricular activities, staff, and enrollment procedures. We will utilize social media platforms to share success stories and educational updates, engaging content that showcases our strength. We can offer virtual school tours and informational open houses for enrollment, encourage existing parents and students to share their personal experience with friends.
Thank you.
If I'm someone from the outside looking in to Fairport, first of all, the size of the community is really attractive. And we already mentioned the brand-new school building, that seems to be some eye candy for people coming in with the technology and all of that. We have a unique ability to offer kids a wide variety of experiences. They can play multiple sports, football, basketball, band, you know, football players are doing the band at halftime, you don't see that everywhere. And so kids can be involved in that and be important in that. You can be career-ready through Auburn and still have college prep and ready to go and take college classes on that. We do have to improve that school report card, we're going to focus on that. It just doesn't reflect how much we care about the kids with that report card rate. But overall, all kinds of opportunities for people that are coming into Fairport, that's what got us hooked here.
Mr. Levine, you'll be first on the next question. In what ways can the board improve communication? What is your strategy for obtaining valuable information from the community and parents that can be used to improve communication in the future?
So I think our hiring of Mr. Billington was a good first step in improving that communication track that we've had in the past years. He's been doing a great job of utilizing social media, text messages, phone calls, emails, any which way to communicate with the community, and more importantly, our students and families in terms of anything that's going on, either inside the school or out. As for the board, I'd like to see us kind of going back to allowing public comment at our board meetings that was brought up just last night. But I do think that's something that's very important so that people can ask those questions for anything that's come up in those board meetings. But, you know, continuing having the online portion to have people not really show their face, but still ask those questions, but then still to be able to, you know, show face and ask questions of anything that, you know, the board should be doing or our school should be doing is important.
Our school board plays a vital role in setting policies and providing oversight for a school district. for a school district. Effective communication within the school board with district administrators, staff, parents, and the community is essential for transparency and successful governance. One way our board can improve is to regularly evaluate the effectiveness of communication efforts through surveys, feedback, and stakeholder input. Obtaining valuable information from the community and parents is crucial for improving communication and ensuring that stakeholders' needs and concerns are addressed effectively. Encourage participation in the school-approved boosters, PTO, and advisory committees. These forums can serve as platforms for ongoing dialogue and collaboration between parents and school administrators, and are essential to aid in barriers to communication issues and improvement.
Mr. Shaffer, please.
Different ways that the board can communicate and people can communicate with the board includes emails, we all have emails to the school, and when you send one in, we read it. I will admit, sometimes we don't respond because we can't provide answers, but actually saying that we received it is an important thing, and they do make an impact on us. We do read it, it does mean something when you send those in there. As has been mentioned, we have public participation. Anybody can ask a question, it gets addressed before a school board meeting. But, and we're working on maybe making that more effective. We've had town hall-type meetings when we discuss building projects and new superintendent characteristics and traits that would be good for the community, and so that's helpful. What gets a little tricky is social media, and I know we have a question on that, so I'll park that a little bit, but that's out there, but I think we've got to be a little careful in how we do that.
Thank you. Mr. Pietrowski.
First off, we need to bring back the integrity to the school board and between the community. Board communication with the community is very simple. Transparency, education, raise test scores for educational excellence, letting the community have a voice at the meetings. Not submitting forms online and telling residents that they can't speak at the meetings. I was at a couple of board meetings, there was only five people there. My forms that I submitted were, the words were turned around. There was no answers, they just read them off, and that was it, went into a board meeting without us. Without the majority of the residents behind us that own the property, our fiscal education and health declines of the village. If our schools decline, our village declines.
So communication is incredibly important, and it needs to be a pretty big priority. We send out surveys all the time regarding all kinds of things, most recently even to vote for homecoming boards. So at a fair minimum, we need to start doing that way more often to get a feedback on issues and how the community feels. If something is going to be voted on, we need to be making it known well ahead of time and ask people, reach out to the community, reach out for conversations that should be happening, more town hall events, and give more opportunities for people to have their feelings heard before something's voted on. The community and families in the district deserve to have their views known, and we should be doing a better job at that. And we encourage public participation in meetings.
All of you are doing an excellent job keeping to the schedule. Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Marusha, you're going to be next on the next question, and that is, how will you engage the community to improve the district?
Maintain open and transparent communication channels. Provide regular updates on district initiatives, challenges, and achievements through newsletters, websites, and social media. Share information about school board meetings, public forums, and other opportunities for community involvement. Encourage active participation in the school-approved booster, PTO, and advisory committees. Encourage parents and families to be active participants in their children's education. Host parent-teacher conferences, workshops, and family nights to promote involvement. Engage students in community service projects that address local needs. These projects foster a sense of civic responsibility and build connections with the broader community. Continuously evaluate the effectiveness of community engagement efforts.
Mr. Shaffer, you're next, please.
Number seven, right?
Yes.
Okay. As far as the board goes, we can listen and ask questions when needed, emails are read, public participation is listened to. Sometimes you can't always make a decision on a question that you have during, at the time of a board meeting, but often they do get feedback, and we're working on improving that. And we've also had community meetings, where we've actively sought the input from residents on big issues that are coming up. But the majority of the communication we do as a district is from our administrators, is from our schools, is from our teachers, is from the principals, everything from McKinley up through Harding, that's where it comes from. I mean, quite frankly, you might hear from us, you want to hear from the people that are actually doing the work and those types of things, that's where all the action is. And so that's where most of it comes from.
Number seven. I'm sorry, number seven.
Number seven, okay. So our schools are really the heartbeat of our community, and a lot of the success of the village depends on the school and vice versa. If the schools thrive, the community is hopefully thriving as well. We want our schools to be a place of pride, where people want to send their kids, and the village will thrive as the schools thrive. Community involvement makes that happen. As I said in the last question, we need to make, we need to make sure our community feels listened to and heard, and that their thoughts matter. And we need to continue to network with businesses and expand on that, and tap into our local resources, and focus on alumni engagement and involvement.
Mr. Levine, please.
So I think community engagement is necessary to ensure that the school's on the right path. I have an open line of communication from calls, texts, emails, whenever you see me around town. I think both organized and unorganized engagement is necessary, so the means, you know, if community members coming to school events, board members going out in that community to help, you know, doing volunteering, or tutoring, or coaching, or whatever it might be, any way that the community can reach out to the board and discuss what their needs and thoughts are, I think is important to the health of the school. And so that's what I would definitely say is most important in terms of how I, as a board member, would need to engage with the community.
Support of the community is critical. The schools should be made more transparent on the daily operations, how to raise test scores, teaching staff, and the financial health. The community should have in-person ability to address the school board with concerns and praises publicly. We will receive more support for future education or projects at the school, not to mention passing levies. Residents will support schools with votes, volunteering, promotions of other, promoting other kids is the overall goal. Every decision we make affects our children. Attracting more students to fill the seats and parents, and buying homes.
Okay, Mr. Shaffer, you'll be first for number eight. How is open enrollment an asset to the district?
Open enrollment's a very key part of our district operations. Forty-five to fifty percent of our kids are open enrollment. And so from open enrollment, they provide us, those kids coming into our district provide a couple of different things. First of all, numbers. We couldn't provide all the programs that we did if we didn't have the numbers of students to attend those programs and participate in those programs. Second of all is revenue. The state pays us money when open enrollment kids come into our district. Probably about thirty percent of our revenues as a district comes from open enrollment. You've got property taxes, you've got state money from our resident kids, and then you've got the open enrollment thing. Those kids also enrich our district, they bring diversity into it. And the key is for our district not, is to be a destination place for kids and families, not to be a last resort of a place to go when the other districts don't work out.
Mr. Levine, would you like to address that?
So open enrollments definitely helps us provide those full classrooms, those full teams, and all kinds of opportunities that we wouldn't be able to have with just our residents. So it is a vital part of our community, and we want those students to be in our district. At the same time, I do think that open enrollment is only healthy in our district and it's managed. You know, as an example, if we have twenty residents and twelve open enrollment students, does it make sense financially to split out a classroom into two and hire a new teacher? Does the teacher feel comfortable knowing that next year's class may be smaller and they may not have a job after that? It's basically saying, is it fair for any of our students to have a classroom with one teacher and thirty-two students? We just want to make sure that whatever we do is thoughtful, it's something that we think about and determine if it's necessary, and we never want to, you know, prevent our students or residents or nots from enrolling, and we never want to have to pick any student out, but we do want to ensure that we're managing the classroom well.
We share a state, excuse me, we share a state shared percentage per student every year to run a school district. Retention of our teachers is based on this. The more students we have coming to the school, the more programs we put in place. Totally blank here, sorry about that. Education tools for students are readily provided. Faculty repairs and upgrades are more frequent than shuffling from one thing to another, hoping that we have money to fund that program, repair the school. With a new school, we have to be able to fill the seats. With more students, we can attract more teachers, lighten the load of some of the teachers, providing a quality education with a one-on-one basis. Not to mention it attracts more residents to buy homes, schools, schools and the village, we've been more financially stable.
Ms. Math, please.
Our district has huge open enrollment numbers, and I know some kids that come from Cleveland every day to come to school here. And many people have told me in the past that open enrollment saved this district from having to be moved outside of Fairport. It also boosts funding and helps, it did help secure funding for our new schools. It's also a big marketing asset that we have to bring new families here.
With the more extensive and more diverse student body, our school has the opportunity to offer a broader range of academic programs and extracurricular activities. Open enrollment has economic benefits for the local community. It may also attract families to the area, potentially leading to increased property values and local business activity. It's also essential to carefully plan and manage open enrollment to ensure that it aligns with our school's missions and goals. We must consider factors such as class sizes, resource allocation, and the capacity to accommodate additional students.
Thank you. Okay. Question nine, Ms. Math, you're going to be first on that. How are you prepared to deal with challenges to the board-approved curriculum?
Well, we need to identify what the challenges are, and the best way to do that is to talk to our teachers and get their feedback. Ask them what the struggles are with the curriculum, and ask them their suggestions or ideas. Do some digging and see if our curriculum just is not transcending to the testing that we have to do, and once we have feedback from our teachers, then we can address if policies need to be changed.
Mr. Shaffer.
Well, as a board member, we don't choose the curriculum, we approve the curriculum. The heavy lifting is lifted up, is left to our educators. And so first, the first line of things is you have to have curriculum that's state-approved. We were talking about literacy last night at the meeting, there's just a few curriculums out there that are actually meet the Ohio State requirements. From that, our educators will then choose the ones that they think will work best, and then they're going to vet that, they're going to work in groups, our math teachers are working together beginning of the year on what curriculum works best and how to vet that and implement that, they're going to do that. After they go through that process, they're going to come to us and they're going to say, this is the reason why we picked the curriculum, this is how it matches up to our values, this is what we think the benefit is, and this is how it's going to be to improve our district. And from that option, we approve it, but they're the ones that do most of the heavy lifting with that.
Ms. Marusha, please.
I'm going to piggyback after Doug. As board members, we seek input from subject matter experts, educational professionals, and specialists in the relevant field to assess the curriculum's quality, accuracy, and alignment with the Ohio Department of Education. It is essential to review and evaluate when challenges to the curriculum arises and the changes that occur. The district just instituted a new literacy curriculum in the elementary grades and a new math curriculum for grades K through twelve. Looking ahead, the district is in the process of evaluating a model curriculum for English Language Arts for the upper grades.
Okay, Mr. Pietrowski, please.
I'm a simple man, and I like to work with hands on. Don't like the million-dollar words or trying to finesse people with, trying to get the best political statement out as a board member or any other position that I'd like to run for. My life's been challenges on a daily basis, from being in the military, being disabled, my daughter was, born with a daughter with disability, working with small businesses in town, coaching youth football and baseball for over fourteen years. Doors will open and shut, and I give, we just cannot give up on these kids, there are futures. I totally lost. Not a great finesser of words.
Okay, Mr. Levine, please.
So a lot of what I say Doug and Cherry really took care of, but basically everyone is entitled to their opinions, that's the great part of needing to work in a team to come to a consensus. Many times, there may not be only one answer, but discussions need to be held and decisions need to be made as a team to ensure we are educating our students not only to the community's standards, but also to the states and future employers. So basically, luckily, we're not in a situation where we have people coming to our board meetings every week and asking all kinds of questions about our curriculum. We and I believe a lot in our teachers and the administrators that provide great curriculum and are striving to increase that state report card based on those curriculum pieces. And I think a lot of what was said last night's meeting touched on a lot of those pieces as well, so, yeah.
Ms. Marusha, please. Mr. Levine will start with you on the next question. What do you believe is the role of social media in education?
So I think in these times, no matter what we do or say, social media is going to be where we find our students. I believe it's important to teach students early the goods and bads of social media, and I do find it necessary for staff and admin to intervene at times on social media when complaints are made. In terms of the board side of social media, I think a lot of it is kind of stated within policy of what we are allowed and not allowed to do, you know, by the state's policies. policy of what we are allowed and not allowed to do, you know, by the state's policies. So I do think that it's great to have social media as a communication piece, but we have to be careful about how we use it.
Ms. Ness, please.
I think the greatest thing about social media and education is it's just the fastest way to get information out there and reaches a large amount of people, and they can get information on school events, clubs, PTO events, fundraisers, and sports. It's a really great way to keep alumni updated on what's going on in the district and to be able to see pictures and videos and sometimes even watch sports games. Even this event tonight is being streamed on Facebook, so that's wonderful, so somebody could have that accessibility that wouldn't be able to come here. And it's an amazing way just to keep the entire community involved and up to date on things.
Mr. Pietrowski, please.
Number one, the social media, I'm old-school. It should be used to advertise and promote our kids as an extra tool. We should teach our kids from right from wrong, absolutely, before they're jumping on there, putting negativity on there, talking about their life, talking about other people. Posts should be positive and uplifting, showing accolades of the school, teachers, and our kids. From time to time, facts need to be addressed and corrected, no one's perfect. My personal feeling is the news, the radio, the social media have too much drama, violence, fed by who's got the highest ratings, who's got the best vanity. So I think we should be doing more of a grassroots within our schools, teaching our kids right from wrong, staying off that, and educating them. We're relying too much on computers and social media, and they're constantly on it.
Ms. Marisha, please.
As a school, we need to offer a variety of communication channels to cater to different preferences, including emails, newsletters, text messages, social media, website updates, and automated phone calls. It plays several vital roles in this school, from enhancing communication and engagement to facilitating learning and promoting the school's brand. It's great to use social media to share important announcements, updates, and event information with parents and guardians. Social media platforms can serve as a rapid communication channel during emergencies such as natural disasters or security incidents, things we plan for and pray never happen. We can use social media to encourage parental involvement in school activities, volunteer opportunities, and parent-teacher organizations. But schools need guidelines and policies which we have in place to ensure responsible and safe use of social media, especially when it's involving students.
Okay, thank you. I am not the greatest social media user, but I am familiar with it because I've had kids. When I look at social media, I kind of look at it as a traffic light. You've got green light, yellow light, and red light with that. Green light is when you're making announcements, providing information, putting forums online, and putting games and scores and stuff like that. I think it's a great tool for that. I think yellow light is where you start to need, use some caution. When we start looking and making opinions on social media, I think that's where it starts to get a little tricky, and even the red light is where we got to really be careful when we start looking at opinions that are, you know, you've got to look at where the sources are coming from on those opinions. People can set some very sure of themselves and not have all the facts in a certain situation, and those types of discussions can result in some harmful things happening on social media.
And Mr. Schaefer, I'm going to ask you to go first on this, our final question. Art, music, and theater are important to creating well-rounded, fully-educated high school graduates. What are your plans to support and sustain those programs in our district?
First of all, I agree, they are. They're very useful. We had a son that was a soccer player, and then he became, he was in...
West Side Story.
West Side Story. Memorable, wasn't it? So it's very important, and making sure we support the positions, the teachers, the supplementals, and those things. But a lot of it arrives on those folks. We can provide the framework as board members, but getting the volunteers to do that, getting the enthusiasm, that's the school, but that's also the community. And so that, there's a number of different areas of responsibility for that to be successful. We've had some real successful productions, but all those things coming together is what makes that successful.
Okay, Mr. Levine, please.
So as someone that has been involved in all three of these areas, and is also the chair of Arts and Culture Alliance, all three of these areas are very important to me and to my family, really, and I do think that they're very fundamental in public education. I think it strives, it's good to have it in not only the curriculum, but as extracurriculars as well. And so having now a music program at the elementary school and a new music teacher and having arts and having all these different activities for students to find their passion and to get involved with, I think is essential. Students really need to feel connected to something while in school, and these type of programs are what really help them to continue through school and feel a connection. You know, sorry, I lost my place. Basically, just any kind of extracurricular is really what we need within our school district to ensure that students feel connected, feel like they have something to do, and that's my time.
Mr. Pietrowski, please.
I believe the arts and music theater are very important. First, we need to raise our state testing scores, be transparent to the community and the fiscal health, fiscal health of our schools, supporting our teachers and staff with retention and advancement. If you don't have the funding and the great staff and teachers, our grades as a school go down. We don't attract students, we don't fill seats, we don't fill this big, brand-new school. We don't fill this big, brand-new school. We don't fill, fill these programs in sports. We can't make new programs for education. As a whole, right now, we keep trying to implement more programs and more programs and more programs, but we don't have the students to fill them. We keep taking away from one program to start a new program, just as such as our baseball team. They didn't want to play, for whatever reasons personally, we didn't have enough students.
Thank you. Mrs. Ness, please.
I also agree that it's very important to be able to sustain these programs. I know funding is always an issue. Potentially researching grants for these specific programs would be a great start. There's a lot of passion behind these programs, and we need to make sure that our teachers feel supported. And we need to involve the alumni and the acute community by brainstorming ideas such as potentially linking the school's theater program with the community theater in the future, or maybe doing more art shows and displays at community events through the year so students can show their, their projects to the community to boost community engagement.
Thank you.
Supporting and sustaining art, music, and theater programs in our school district is essential for providing a well-rounded education that nurtures students' creativity, critical thinking, and emotional intelligence. Students who later graduate, graduate are prepared for success in a diverse and dynamic world. We need to maybe develop a long-term plan that outlines the district's commitment to these programs and strategies for maintaining their quality and availability over time.
Thank you. Okay, that was our final question, thank you, and now we'll proceed to the closing statements. Do you need to break for a minute, chance to stand up?
Do a fork in it.
Then we'll start with Mr. Levine for our thematic closing statement, please.
All right, so basically for me, being a part of this board just the past seven months or so has been very eye-opening. A lot of what I thought would be able to be accomplished in the amount of time that I've been involved is something that's definitely not even possible. And so a lot of times, I'm one of those people that always wants action and always wants to get involved within projects, and being at a point where, you know, I'm providing a policy rather than providing the work and run-through to actually make something come to fruition has been difficult. And so now that I've kind of seen exactly what we can do and what we're allowed to do as a board, I think has made very big changes in my mindset of how I can be successful on the board, and I think the learning curve has really helped me to grow to hopefully be a better board member as I go and hopefully get elected into this position. You know, obviously, my main mindset is about the students. I talked a lot about the teachers and about, you know, other areas within the district, but all of that is because I have a care for the students and have a care to make this district as successful as possible. And so I think each of the different areas that we talked about tonight can definitely hope to achieve those type of areas of success, and I think all of us that are sitting here want the same things. And so I just hope that, you know, as you all go through and elect your board members for this upcoming year, that you just think about the different things that are necessary in your minds to make a successful school district.
Ms. Marisha, please.
So I've had the pleasure of being on this board for four years, and it's been able, I've been able to work with great teachers, see students. I'd like to acknowledge the progress and the achievements made during my current term. The board was successful in approving the largest construction project with the new PK-12 campus library in the village's history, thanks to all the voters' support. Along with revamping and updating all of the board's policies, turning around a negative fiscal forecast with conservative and sound practices, and most recently hiring a much-needed school resource officer for the district. My core values align with my commitment to student success, academic excellence, and financial transparency. My goal for the district is to continue to focus on student achievement. The school board's fundamental role is to work within their communities to improve student achievement goals. The involvement of parents and the community is crucial to a student's success. I would continue to foster partnerships between our schools and the community, and have always been open to any phone calls, messages, text messages that the community has had. If I'm not able to answer something, I've always directed it, responded back, and directed it to the necessary person. So hopefully you will reelect me.
Mr. Pietrowski, please.
This thing's been a problem for us all night. Voting for me is voting to get to work. Obviously, tonight you've seen it, I'm not a great finesser of words. We as, we as a school board members need to be more transparent with our residents, with the Fairport Schools appearance looking stellar on the outside, but internally, we struggle with funding, education, testing standards. We lose funding from the state and federal level. We've become the social topic of drama. No support, and then we receive no support from the community. Our village loses, our schools lose, or we don't have a school. Every decision we make directly impacts our children. If we don't have a school, we fail our kids. Our children are our education, I mean, excuse me, our children and their education are our future. I just want to get to work, get over this finessing, you guys, with a speech that's not really good. One-on-one, I can talk up a storm. I'm sure there's a few individuals here. So vote for me, and let's get to work.
Mr. Schaefer, please.
Thank you. Just like to thank you all for having, coming, for having this. It's been a nice opportunity to talk. You know, my experience with the school board is I joined it in 2020, filling a void that was there because of the resignation. So I got appointed to that, I got elected to finish out that seat, which is now finishing at this point in time. During that time, we first started, it was tense as far as meetings went. I mean, people were, you know, clashing, and over time, we've been blessed to come together. There has been improvement made. We work together as a board, we don't always agree, but we have a respect for each other that may not have always, always been there, and we've had progress made. You know, you have this school building, we've had levies passed. We've been able to pass levies and create financial stability and cut taxes at the same time, and that was a team effort that did that. I love working with the administrators and the teachers visiting now. I care about this district a lot, and, you know, there are five people up here that care, and there's three seats that are available. And so you guys now get the choice of picking which people that care, you get to vote on for. I'll look forward to working with people in the future if I get elected. You know, privacy signs and stuff like that doesn't mean I don't care, that's just my opinion as far as the campaigning goes. My family's here, my mothers are here, I got four grandkids, my daughter-in-law, my son is here, we just love it here. And so, and I think there's a lot of good things coming up, and I appreciate you guys' time.
So first, I just want to say thank you guys all for coming out and taking this time to listen, to all of us have our chance to speak, and anyone who tuned in via Facebook, and to the library staff for working very, very hard to make this happen. And I just really want to say that it's been very special to me over the last few years to be able to become so involved in this town and meet so many different people and be able to have a lot of conversations with them and, you know, hear their feelings and their needs and all of that. So I would very much be honored to be appointed to the school board and to be able to see the growth and the success in the district and also continue that open communication with the community. I'm going to be doing a meet-and-greet at the library, to be determined, they just told me that this was a possibility today, so.
We'll be open to all of you.
Yeah, for all of you guys, if you didn't know. So that's going to be happening in the next few weeks, if anybody would like to come and chat or have any more questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming and participating.
Thank you.
At this crazy time in politics, it is wonderful to see people come together and discuss things on a reasonable adult level. Thank you for allowing me to participate in this. I always enjoy listening to all the candidates, and I'm always impressed with what a wide range of talent and interest and love for this town you have. Thank you for being here.
Nancy Currie, you're a rock star. Thank you for doing this.
No problem.
Yes, there were Saturdays between now and Election Day that are open, if anybody wants, we'll figure it out and schedule Saturday times for people to do casual conversations with potential school board members. Thanks for coming, guys, and audience, thank you all very much for a lovely evening.